Okay. Call the meeting to order. Oh, that's loud. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel, Alderman Consilla, Alderman Pousa, Alderman Bitner, Alderman Randall, Alderman Tyler, Alderman Anthony, Alderman Ovian, Alderwoman Schaefer, Alderman Dittelman, Alderman Gah, Alderwoman Steele, Alderman Weigant, Alderman Elmore, Alderman Wiggington, Alderman Barfield.
Alderman Barfield and Alderman Hazel have been excused. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart, City Attorney Horner, Police Chief Bill Clay, Fire Chief Tom Poor, Finance Director Jamie Maitrait, City Engineer Tim Gregorwitz, Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn, Human Resource Director Sherry Faber, Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belleville, Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo, Director of Public Works Jason Poole, Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle, Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill, Director of Library Leander Spearman.
I think they're all here. Mr. Horner's has Mr. Flynn sitting in for him this evening. So I think that covers all the staff. This time we have Cub Scout Pack Fifty-Three from Whiteside School here this evening. And we were talking earlier, boys, if you want to come forward, we're going to ask you to lead us in the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand. It's nice to have the scouts and they're gonna... They're working on a badge, so we had a little talk earlier.
No, they're fine. It's fine. It's fine.
That's fine. Keep them on. That's fine.
It's all good.
We're pretty flexible.
You can stand up here in front of both sides.
Truly.
All right.
You ready?
Okay, go ahead.
Let us witness to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, good luck. See you then. They had a lot of good questions when we met earlier. Okay, this time, welcome to our second meeting in our renovated city hall. And as you can see, we got artwork and the mayor's back up. It's been a busy couple of weeks moving in, but slowly we're getting everything back to a good state of being. If we had to leave here this evening, even though it's a beautiful evening, it doesn't look like we have any storms in the forecast. Staff is here, a number of police officers. If we had to go downstairs for a storm, it's across the lobby, right across from the clerks and treasurer's counter, there's a door that's... You can go downstairs and we... One of them will get that open and you can go downstairs to the basement. If we had to leave because of smoke or fire or some emergency to get out of the building, we would ask you to go out, preferably the front door, but either the doors. And we would ask that you would go across the street carefully and meet by the county courthouse sign. So we can kind of ask everybody if they have the people with them that they were sitting by. So that's just if, if heaven forbid, we'd have that. We have no hearing, public hearing this evening. And at this time, I'm gonna open, does anyone... Would anyone like to speak for public participation? If you do, raise your hand. I'll call you forward to the microphone and you can have two to three minutes. Yes, sir, Mr. Fader. Go ahead. So you can stand up here if you'd like. Yeah, there's a microphone right there. Just give your name and tell us what you're talking about, what's on your mind.
Yes, my name is Gerald Fader and I'm talking about the strip mall that they want a liquor license for and my opposition to it.
Okay.
Oh, should I take?
You want to... You've got something in particular you want to say, what your concerns are?
Yes, I'd like to give each side a picture of... My apartments are here and it's thirty-five foot away from this place where they want to put the sports bar. And here's one for you. And I wrote down a couple of things I'd like to go over with. My background, I've been in business fifty-four years of renting apartments in Belleville, Shiloh, and around different places. The... This is a wrong location. It's not enough parking for a sports bar. They have four other businesses at that... At that place, plus a car wash. They wash cars by hand. Also, the building has thirteen hundred square feet, not the amount that was stated on the application. I think it was like twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred. And then I was wondering if they have two bathrooms there, a man and a woman's bathroom there, and then time they're cooking. And if they got thirteen hundred square feet, you're not gonna have too much places for people to go and drink beer. And I was wondering how many people were allowed in there to begin with. And it would be better located one block away at the old Sears store. And our next store, it's another one placed there by the Sears store for rent. And that way you got more parking, you got... You won't be aggravating anybody with loud noise and smoking. Uh, let's see. And it's only thirty-five foot away from my apartment building, the one apartment building. I have thirty fi... I have five apartments there and four apartment buildings, and I have thirty-six rental units there that don't cause any problems with the police or any aggravation. They're all good people, elderly people, some of them are sixty, some of them are seventy, some of them are eighty. Some have been with me twenty, thirty, forty years. Let's see. I own... I own two properties next to Cutter's Tavern and I know what the problem I had there in their heyday. Not today, but in their heyday. And that's why I'm here tonight. Take up the lo... Take a look at the location I gave you there and you can see how close it is to the apartments. And the strip mall is real close. And it's built over the power line easement. It's not supposed to be, but it wasn't caught. When that building was built, it wasn't too much enforcement of restrictions and that's how it snuck in. And I didn't catch it either.
Okay, Mr. Horner.
Let's see. There were some... Some neighbors were afraid to come tonight because of retaliation by opposition of the building, but they were... They were very upset about it. You ask yourself, would you like your parents to live there? Or your grandparents? And to know that they would have that music going on at night and loud noises. It's just no place for a sports bar. It's... It just wouldn't work out for anybody to be there. It's a wrong location.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fader, for your comments. Anyone else this evening would like to come forward? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Larry Thomas. I'm the one that's trying to do the sports bar at nineteen thirteen North Belt East. There's plenty of parking there. I've been approved through the owners to have it there. They got extra parking over on the other side of it also. There's been a couple pieces, places there, barbecue stand and all that above. It's a big commercial zone. You know, others, the small sports bars there. So I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Belleville. New revenue is always good. For as a sports bar, you're not gonna hear the music out like that anyway. It's just a sports bar, games, you know, different things like that. No loud music. It's not a DJ. It's not a club or anything like that. So I think it's a great idea that I'm trying to do a positive thing out here. So...
Okay, well, we'll get to the... We'll get to the questions. If we have any later, we can ask you, okay?
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Anybody... Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close public participation. We're gonna move on to the presentations and recognitions and appointments. And tonight, as I did last couple of years, I want to read a proclamation. And while I don't think there's anybody... Is there anybody here from the Basic Initiative tonight? This is... Involves them, but it's about community. And I think it's very important that we pause for just a minute and allow me to go over this real quickly. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Belleville is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and is why Belleville actively works to be a community of character. And whereas Belleville is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with the total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas it is evident with the establishment of the Basic Initiative, Belleville's Community of Character Initiative, and it's evident through community-wide projects such as Paint the Town, The Mission Continues, Southside Park Project, The Bellevue Park Community Work Day, and with the Belleville Helping Belleville Service Days each year, as well as the countless continuing services, service rising from our schools, churches, service agencies, and businesses which have helped establish Belleville's status as an all-American city." And that was in two thousand eleven. "And whereas Belleville chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift up fellow members of the community and will honor such individuals at its annual Citizens of Character Dinner. And whereas Belleville acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create five hundred and seventy-five extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, two thousand seventeen, as Belleville, being a community of character, continues to highlight the belief that communities are made stronger through individuals and organizations who dedicate themselves to going the extra mile in volunteerism and service. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the city of Belleville, do hereby proclaim November first, two thousand seventeen, to be Extra Mile Day in Belleville and encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life and to acknowledge all those around us who are inspirational in their efforts to make their organizations, families, communities, country, or world a better place." As I glanced at this a while ago, and we did read it here last year, I, you know, I looked at it and I thought, you know what? That certainly deserves to be read each year because I think it's a good reminder. But we're very fortunate in Belleville. Belleville has exemplary volunteerism in this town. And I'm very, very proud of all of you because there's a lot of you in this room, as I look around, who give a lot of extra time for a lot of great causes. So thank you very much and let's make sure we remember to reflect on that on November first and throughout the year. At this time, I'm gonna go on to the regular portion of the meeting and I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of October two thousand seventeen. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer, to receive and file the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of one million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Pousa. Is there any discussion on the claims or payroll? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner? Aye. Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Motion carries. Reports. I'd ask for oral reports of the library. Who do we have in the library board here? Andy, would you like to make this motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Permission to junk?
Permission to junk the two thousand Christ of Lincoln.
We have a motion to scrap or junk this vehicle from the library department, second by Mary Steele, Alderman Steele. Discussion? I need a roll call vote on this.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
I should've told you that the library board also approved this first and that staff talked it over with Leander and it obviously was the right thing to do. So nobody hesitated too much there, but I want to tell you that. This time, we go on to Public Health and Housing Committee. Alderman Pousa?
I have a motion to approve... To approve to approve the low bid of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars from S. Schaefer, Escavating Incorporated for the demolition of twenty-one South Seventy-Fifth Street, garage only, twelve fifteen Patterson Court, garage only, one fifty-eight Narsete Eight Street, thirty-five eighteen West Eighth Street, five oh one South Hurst Street, and ninety-eight thirty-four Baltimore and seventy fifteen West Eighth Street.
We have a motion by Alderman Pousa. Do I hear a second for those demolitions? Second by Alderman Ovian. Any questions on those demolition, that motion? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington, Streets and Grades?
Yeah, and before I make this motion, this is for the two thousand eighteen asphalt patch program. In that motion, I'm not sure I understand the eighteen dash...
I was gonna ask the city engineer. Did you see that, Tim?
Oh, okay.
Oh, we're getting pretty fancy. Okay. Well, then, let's go ahead and include that, would you, in your motion?
Okay. On behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the apparent low bidder for the eighteen dash zero 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 dash one zero that's GM asphalt patch program. Still moved.
Do we get... Who's the... Who was the lower bidder?
Chris. Chris Brothers.
Chris Brothers. And you should've gotten the bids. This just went through Streets and Grades. We have a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear any discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian? Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Motion carries. Okay, Traffic Committee. Alderman Ovian.
On behalf of Traffic Committee, I have a motion to approve a four-way stop at Lucinda Avenue and East Eighth Street. Still moved.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear discussion? I would just ask for all in favor and have the proper ardent drawn. So there's no further. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of... I turn to a clerk, but is there any of them in here? Let me ask this before we get started. Are there any of you want to separate out or do you want to read them as a group?
Let's just read them separately, please.
Each of them? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's go with the first one.
Okay. Eleven E one, fifty, September seventeen. Brett Garrett, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of Special Control for signage at one nineteen, one twenty-one, East Main Street, parcel zero eight, two two zero, three three three, zero three one, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable portion of zoning code one five five point zero five two, Ward two.
I make a motion to request a grant.
Motion by Alderman Pousa. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear discussion on this motion, this recommendation from the zoning board? All in favor of approving this recommendation? Have the proper ardent drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E two, fifty-one, September seventeen. James Summers, a request for a bulk variance in order to allow a property at twenty-one eighteen Muren Boulevard, parcel zero eight, one four zero, three zero nine, zero four four, to maintain a twenty-two-foot front yard setback for construction of a car port in a B-one multifamily residence district. Applicable portion of zoning code one six two point zero three six, one six two point five seven zero, one six two point one eight one, Ward one.
Motion by Alderman Consilla to approve the recommendation from the zoning board, second by Alderman Pousa. Any discussion on this recommendation? All in favor of having this recommendation approved and have the proper ardent drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E three, fifty-two, September seventeen. Larry Thomas, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license for a sports bar to be located at nineteen thirteen North Belt East, parcel number zero eight, two three zero, three zero three, one six five, located in a C-two heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code one six two point two four seven and one six two point five seven zero, Ward seven.
Alderman Elmore?
Motion to deny this request.
Motion by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Weigant, both from Ward seven. Discussion?
I'd like to point out that I was in attendance at the zoning meeting. We addressed several issues, one of them being parking. There is no viable solution that I see. To the left of this building is a double sewer main. Obviously, that's not going anywhere. We have a residential business owner that has had a concern of people walking across his lot already, currently. And they will be walking across his lot. He's a daytime business. And of course, a sports bar will be predominantly an evening business. The residential apartments, but this property as well, that is... That presents legitimate concern with a late-night clientele. And I love a good sports bar. I would love to see another sports bar in Belleville. But I have great concerns with a sports bar trying to be quiet. A quiet sports bar, to me, is an oxymoron. I don't think that's even possible. I've never seen a quiet sports bar. The last issue we discussed at zoning was the fact that smokers would have to smoke outside. There's a very, very limited number of parking spots in this commercial building. They literally would be standing in the parking lot. There is no other space on this property. There's a question about the square footage of the building. I measured twelve hundred square feet. I've heard a couple of different numbers, but it's nowhere near what was originally stated. So for all these reasons, I just feel like it's great as business ventures it could be. This is definitely the wrong, wrong, wrong location. And I understand he's in the middle of a lease and you'd like to continue his lease and try to turn profit on his lease. But that's the wrong business in the wrong location.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anyone else wishing to come? Alderman Weigant?
Can I answer Phil's question? The residents behind her, like Mr. Fader said, they've been a longtime resident, people behind her in apartments. And they're totally against it. I talked to a few of them already and they're not bored. People aren't to drive. I have fifteen, twenty calls from people not... Not bored, totally against it. And I have to go along and I believe it's too small, not enough parking, and I think it's gonna be a lot of trouble.
I just want to add one thing. When... When the variance process was put into place in two thousand six, when we added this to our ardent's, it was for the purpose of... We were starting to see, at that time, more and more what I call the old neighborhood taverns sold and they were no longer the old neighborhood taverns. Some of them where people used to walk to the local established drinking facility. A lot of times they had motorcycles and a lot of outside. And the smoking ban a couple of years back did make a difference. People got to be fifteen feet from the front door. And in some cases, in these small confined areas, and this is pretty tight, it puts people out pretty close to neighbors' homes. And then when they don't even realize that they're talking loudly at night or maybe, you know, near midnight or whatever, and people got to get up. So that's one of the reasons we put this variance process in place, to make sure that people had a voice, that a good proposal wasn't gonna negatively impact possibly a neighborhood. So it was put there for a reason. And we do get a number of calls... I get a number of calls as the liquor commissioner from some places in town where the outside activities bleed over and cause issues with the neighbors. And in many cases, they're farther apart than this one is. So I think the comment I'm hearing is that not so much no to Mr. Thomas, but to the location. Mr. Wiggington?
You know, matter of economics too. Anybody that goes into business, you want to go into business to make money. Sports bars that I've seen are relatively large with a large amount of parking. And it's a volume type of an operation. You know, and I don't want to see Mr. Thomas up for failure because he has neither one of those. It's a very small storefront, no parking, and you just cannot do volume type of business in an operation that small. I think a lot of it comes down to economics also.
Any other... Yes, Mr. Anthony?
Um, first, well, two questions. One, did the zoning board of...
The zoning board did pass this.
They passed?
Yeah.
Three or four to one? One... There was one no vote.
Four to one.
Secondly, what type of businesses actually have been in this...
They've had a couple pizza deliveries. Viviano and Pizza Hut, I think, was there. To my knowledge, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that Strip Center has ever had a liquor license. And that was one of the things I looked at, best I could find. I don't... Does anybody prove me wrong? I don't think they ever had a liquor license in that location, which was one of my things I was looking at personally. Go ahead. Okay. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say I drove by and looked at this and the pictures are about right, okay? I mean, it's very close. And it's not just one house that's there, but an entire apartment building. And I just don't see this as working out. I think it's a nice idea to open a sports bar, but not this location.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Might go back to the four to one vote on this thing. The four people that voted for it, there had to be good reasons and I'm sure that all these things were kicked around in the meeting. They wouldn't have passed it. They wouldn't have thought it good. I've also been out in front of these places before. We're between there and the highway, one sixty-one there. That's your little buffer zone there. That's where everybody, I think, would be doing their smoking. Seemed to be an issue, but I don't know why. I don't know how big the park might have been if I met our zoning board.
Yeah, I don't know. I was not at the zoning board meeting. I honestly didn't talk to any zoning board members about this issue. I did also drive out there and looked at it because if... If that location would have passed, it had been up to me to then talk to Mr. Thomas about the ours. It... The setback from the other properties is a concern. And I do know with other businesses, the smoking situation is just... It's just a reality today.[1680.84] They have to get away from the building a little bit and, and they're gonna be even closer, um, to the residences, no matter where they stand.
I don't think at the zoning meeting, it was really discussed that fifteen feet from the door puts that bystander, pedestrian is what they are, once they enter a parking lot, they're pedestrians in a semi uncontrollable parking lot. So people literally would be standing fifteen feet away from the door in a parking spot, let a car-
And, and if you go fifteen feet to the left when you're facing it, you're in the grassy area even closer to the-
Where there's a giant sewer main.
I know, I know. But, I mean, it is, it's tight, it is tight.
Nothing suitable.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Obviously, there's been quite a bit of thought and I think what I'm hearing certainly, uh, another location might be greatly supported. So I'll, I'll call for a roll call vote. An a vote, an a vote is to vote no because the motion was to deny.
Ready?
Clarification?
Yes.
An a vote is to deny this request?
Yes, because the motion that was made by Alderman Elmore was to deny the zoning, the zoning request, the variance request, okay?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so I, if you vote aye, you're voting to deny it. Okay, roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
No.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wingington.
Aye.
I'd have it, the motion carries to deny and, um, Mr. Thomas, I think we can talk about other locations or something, I'd be glad to talk with you too, okay? If you wanna get with me. All right, moving on, we have the next zoning board case.
Eleven E four, fifty-three, September seventeen, Rob, Robert Williamson. A request for the following bulk variances. A, maintain a twelve foot front yard setback to allow construction of a porch and accompanying overhang. B, maintain a ten foot rear yard setback on a six thousand three hundred and sixty-one square foot, A two, two family residence, district zone parcel at one thousand and one Shields Street, parcel number zero eight two two zero two zero five zero zero eight. Applicable portion of the zoning code one six two point five seven zero and one six two point one six seven, Ward one.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? By Alderman Pusa, do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving this, uh, recommendation by the zoning board and have the proper ardentance drawn, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E five, fifty-four, September seventeen, Bernard Russell. A request for a youth variance to permit a screen printing business in an existing building located at fifteen thirty-seven Donna Drive, zero eight zero eight zero four one seven zero two one, in a C one light commercial district. Applicable portion of zoning code one six two point five seven zero and one six two point two three two, Ward three.
Motion by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Randall to approve the recommendation of the zoning board and have the proper ardentance drawn. Any other questions or comments? All in favor and have the motion, uh, and have the proper ardentance drawn, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E six, fifty-five, September seventeen, Dean Ren. A request to rezone the six thousand four hundred and seventy-nine square foot parcel at five eleven Sherman, zero eight two two zero two one four zero two nine, from A two, two family residence district to C one light commercial district. Applicable portion of the zoning code one six two point one six five through one six nine, one three two point two three zero to two three three and one six two point five nine zero, Ward one.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Alderman Consilla to approve, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Dittelman, do I hear a discussion? All in favor of this motion, which was recommended by the zoning board also, and, uh, have the proper ardentance drawn and signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We move on, next page. We go to, uh, um, finance, so Alderman Consilla.
Uh, Your Honor, I'd like to ask if anybody would be, would object to reading these five as a group?
Any objection?
I don't, I, can I have a one quick question?
Yeah.
On number three, are we replacing vehicles, the police vehicles?
We're not replacing this year.
We're adding.
We're adding, uh, we're adding the five police SUVs and one new pickup. This is one of the first years, we had a great discussion about it in, in the finance, that, um, we feel like this one time would be a good thing to, uh, add a few because we have so many, what I wanna say, extra duties these days, that they're just needing a few more vehicles, uh, for allow the, there's like this month of October is absolutely unbelievable. Football games in every part of town, uh, Oktoberfest, chili cookoff, all these things. There's just not enough vehicles for people to, uh, to get in and do and then we get to, we get to the, the Christmas time of the year and, and if one or two or three are down, we just don't have the cars, so. Chief? Go ahead. You're welcome to say anything you wanna add.
And it's not just that, that's part of it, but it's not just that. Another part of it is the usage of the vehicles. In the past, we have had four officers driving one vehicle. Those vehicles are used up, we have a hundred thousand mile fi- uh, five year warranty bumper to bumper from Ford that gives us on that. And what we try to do is get that number down because we're out of these vehicles within a couple of years. We're only replacing five to six vehicles at best. We're normally behind, we don't have a lot of spare vehicles at all for the different functions that the, uh, mayor was alluding to. So it's more than just that. What we're after is ju- try to bring that down, bring some accountability. When you have four people in a car, who's bringing what? Who's doing what? So we have gotten ourselves in a position now where we're holding two officers accountable for that vehicle, extending the lives of those vehicles. And so we're seeing a lot of better care on that. If I had my way, and I've tried this, but I've never got past it, I have, uh, one police officer to a car, but that's not gonna happen. I know that's expensive. So this is not something that we can do overnight, but it is a goal. And that is what we're working for. And I think we're making some good progress here. And what we do is we take the low end, uh, the vehicles that don't have maybe eighty, ninety thousand miles and we move those vehicles to spare positions so that you can see those downtown and we're not impacting, uh, people at home patrol. Because what we don't wanna do is be using those cars that should be used for patrol to do these extra details and so forth and take them out because we're still driving that mileage up. So that's really the reason why we're doing this.
On a five year bumper to bumper, uh, maintenance agreement, is there a regular scheduled, uh, uh, maintenance on these vehicles? Do they, and do they go back to TriStar for maintenance?
No, 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 we just go to Offenberg.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a nationwide warranty, I mean, it's under manufacturing.
But it is a scheduled maintenance program?
Right, the scheduled maintenance program on that. And there's also some exorbitant costs that we saw that when we started getting past that, because of course we'd get past that hundred thousand miles before we ever got to the five years. We're, within two years, we're already at ninety plus thousand miles or more. So we're seeing a marked improvement in how we manage our fleet and, and keeping those costs down. And that is, that has been striking for us, so that's why you see us trying to do this. You know, when we, when we trade a car, uh, on average, what we get about twelve hundred to two thousand dollars for it. Now, what ha- happens is a lot of times we can save some money on the equipment that's inside the car. So we wanna try to do that. So there is a balance here of how we do that, that's why we're not trying to, you know, do it all at one time, but we are trying to get this so that we can keep patrol to, to a vehicle. That's important.
And that, with the equipment, with, with the equipment inside, the radios and all that?
That's correct. And I will tell you, and these guys with the, uh, fleet coordinator and, and what we've been able to do is we just purchased a bunch of radios from Centcom that were older radios, but they fit, we had a, uh, hell of a savings with that. So we look at how we can, you know, bring in equipment, but keep improving these cars. Now, I will tell you, at the spares, we're also trying to get cameras in those vehicles as well because what can happen? They can be out on a call for service even though they're working downtown or something, something significant happens and guess what? Now there's no video. So we, we think about those things too, but the first thing to do is get the patrol vehicles fully equipped, keep two to the car and then slowly push that out. Where we have the spare vehicles and everything, eventually all of our cars will have all the equipment and we'll have sufficient numbers to go around to meet that number.
The other thing I wanna clarify is, Tri, Tri Ford I believe is a state bid, isn't that correct?
Yes.
That was, I think, is that-
They were the low bid.
They were the low bid. Okay, and the other thing is, we do always make sure that the local dealers get this, get advertised of the bidding. They usually don't choose to, to bid on the package because they don't deal in the police package like some of these places do. But I just want you to know, 'cause a lot of new council members here, we always make sure.
Right, they didn't bid, but they do our maintenance.
Yeah, they do our maintenance, they do our maintenance. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, Chief, I'm just, uh, curious, uh, how many vehicles do we have and what's the makeup of the fleet?
We have ninety-six vehicles currently, thirty of those vehicles are assigned to patrol, there are-
Would those be SUVs?
Those are all SUVs, yes, sir, we've had it of all the parcels, they were too small, they didn't last. And sadly, the Crown Vic, the greatest fleet, they're made as long as-
Unless you had an inch of snow.
The ditch during the winter? The Crown Vic will keep pulling out the ditch in the winter?
Oh, that would be correct.
That would be correct. Now, one of the things we-
They were great if you only, if you didn't have an inch of snow.
But we did move the, but we still, I don't think we have many, but we have a couple and then we took the Torres's, which we tried that, that one years they came out, or I think a couple of years we tried, just way too small when you put the equipment. So what did we do with those? We moved those to the unmarked vehicles and special units, so we still have those.
Any other questions, so, yes, sir?
Does Ford have an extended warranty, affordable one?
Not for police.
After a hundred thousand miles?
I, I'm not aware of it, if they do, I mean, you know, that we're not gonna have the kinda buying power that you would think that we would have with Ford.
We, we, we asked about that years ago, Danny, I'm almost positive, somebody might prove me wrong, but for a police package, I think this is the maximum warranty.
It's a police car. It's a hundred thousand miles of, of five years bumper to bumper, you can't get better than that. We're not Chicago, we buy five cars, six cars. I mean, what kinda leverage do we have? So we get a good deal with what, what we have, but they're not gonna be giving us any much more than that. I think it's a very good deal, it works very well, provided you don't use those cars twenty-four seven like we've done in the past.
Yeah. We used to have a lot less cars, but it, they'd get a hundred thousand miles in one year.
Right.
And they were, and they were, and they weren't worth nothing after a year, year, eighteen months, they were shot. Cause they never shut off.
No, never did.
Any other questions? Now, I believe this started, my, my one question was any, any, uh, objection to reading these as a group? But we had questions about number three, so if there's no other questions, can we proceed reading them as a group? Alderman Consilla, you wanna go back and try that again?
Uh, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve the demolition grant of five thousand dollars for West End Redevelopment Corporation, known as WORK, and to approve low bid of twenty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars for Wright Automotive for purchase of one police truck, and to approve the low bid of a hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars from Tri Ford for purchase of five police SUVs, and to approve the changes to Stone Lodge rental as recommended by staff, and to approve the audit reports for our fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
We have a motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Wingington. Discussion about any of these items? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner. Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga. Steele. Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wingington.
Those motions carry. Economic Development, we go back to Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of Economic Development, I make a motion to amend the development agreement with Marco Investments, that's the Dollar General store.
Of the Dollar General project. We have a motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Randall, is that correct? Discussion on this? Roll call.
Um, Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner. Randall. Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer. Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga. Steele. Weigant. Elmore. Wingington.
Motion carries. I'd ask for someone to consider making a motion from administration to approve Citizens Park Cell Tower, uh, Verizon Wireless Site Plan for an eighty-five foot ma- monopole tower to be located within a one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square foot compound at Bellevue, Belleville Citizens Park. Motion by Alderman Randall, do I hear a second by Alderman Steele? Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner. Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony. Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wingington.
Motion carries. Communications, we have none tonight.
No.
I didn't get the first in a while. Petitions, we have none, resolutions, we have none. Ardentances, um, I'd ask that we read by title only, ardentance, uh, eighty-one eleven. Um, we're going to, uh, you want a motion to, or should we just skip over eighty-one twelve since they denied it? Or should we have, do we need a motion to, uh?
Uh, there's no order.
There's no order, so let's just scratch that one, okay? On your thing, so I'd ask for a motion to, uh, consider reading, uh, by title only eighty-one eleven, eighty-one thirteen, eighty-one fourteen, eighty-one fifteen and eighty-one sixteen.
And eighty-one ten.
And eighty-one ten, I'm sorry, I missed that, I went too fast. It's the bifogals. Uh, so we have those ardentances, I'm asking for a motion to read by title only. Do you have a problem if we read them as a group? Is that okay? Motion to read by title only and as a group, by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Schaefer. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance eighty-one ten, twenty seventeen, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifty, September seventeen, Brett Garrett. Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-one eleven, twenty seventeen, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifty-one, September seventeen, James Summers. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty-one thirteen, twenty seventeen, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifty-three, September seventeen, Robert Williamson. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-one fourteen, twenty seventeen, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifty-four, September seventeen, Bernard Russell. Fifteen F, ordinance eighty-one fifteen, twenty seventeen, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifty-five, September seventeen, Dean Ren. Fifteen G, ordinance eighty-one sixteen, twenty seventeen, and ordinance amending chapter seventy-five traffic schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belva, Illinois as amended by amending portions of sections thereof.
Do I hear a motion to approve these ardentances? Alderman Schaefer, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ga. Discussion on the ar- ardentances as just read. Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele. Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wingington.
Motion carries, any unfinished business? Miscellaneous, yes, sir?
Yeah, just, uh, I could ask you for an update regarding the two things here, Meredith Home, Hopper House.
Well, I think, first of all, I'll go to the, to the Hopper House first. I think you can see there's a lot of progress, I don't have an exact date. I know they're working with, uh, Hopper International on the computer system inside and trying to get that time, their point of sale, et cetera. Uh, I think they're, they poured an awful lot of concrete out there in recent days. I haven't been out there this week, I don't know if they proved, for the last three or four days I haven't been out there. I don't know if they started pouring the asphalt, but they're getting ready, it's coming real soon. Um, I don't have an exact date, but they're working, large numbers of people, six days a week they've been working. On the Meredith Home, I think what I should tell you is this, uh, we have a meeting coming up in a few days with Mike Lundie from Swida and the group from Bywater. Uh, we still believe this project is, is got great possibilities. Originally, we were told it was not even really believed to be possible to get in the September round, to get into the September round of, of bidding, but we got in there. There's a couple of things we know we gotta work on, a couple of issues. And we're gonna sit down and strategize and find out just how soon we can resubmit, but I think that'll be what we come back to Finance Committee with as a recommendation or to the econo- wherever committee we choose to come back to, be one of those two. And we'll have a plan of, a plan of attack, but Eric and I and Anissa are gonna meet with that group in a few days, I know it's on my schedule. And we're going to, uh, uh, sit down and take a look at the, the one or two issues that Mr. Lundie on the phone told me that we need to sit down and strategize on. I don't think it's dead, I think it's, uh, a very good project. I think, uh, this council and people from before who sat in some of your seats, uh, agreed pretty much unanimously in recent years that the, the efforts to try to save the building, uh, to the point where we put a new roof on it and, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a lot of things that we can, but we have a couple hurdles and we're gonna try hard to overcome them. But, uh, I'll know, we'll know more and, and, is that fair, Eric, to say? Pretty accurate, so I think that's where we're at right now, good question. Yes, sir?
Uh, for the clerk, we used to have, uh, the results of the zoning in the zoning description.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's being discontinued?
No, we just, it just, yeah, we'll make sure it's on there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There sounds like Swida's still on board on the Meredith Home, but it's the state of Illinois that is, uh, is the, is the problem in moving forward right now. Is, I mean, am I right on that?
Well, Swida still believes in the project very much. Uh, Mike and I and Mr. Nations have talked, he's the chairman of the board, they're not giving up on it. Uh, but we have a couple, we have a couple of things that they pointed out to us that they thought were obstacle. Now, I will tell you this also. Uh, Eric, is this a true statement? There was no projects approved probably south of Champaign? Springfield? So, there was nothing in southern Illinois, I kinda felt like southern Illinois was a little bit left out of this picking.
The only two projects that were approved south of Springfield were not in the same category as this project. So we, anything we competed against was, was north of Springfield.